Okay, this is the July 11th, 2016, regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plurid?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here.
Do we have any agenda changes for tonight? Commissioner Conley?
I would like to move item 5E from the consent agenda to new business.
Yes, what?
I would also like to move that we remove item 6, new business item, this evening.
Okay, we can do that too then. So I will make item 5E will become number 6 on the new business. We're removing 6. We don't need to vote on this, we just, we don't need a second, we just do it. Okay? We do not vote.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, with the amended agenda, do we have an approval of the agenda? Do I see a motion? Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, passes 7-0. Announcements. I would like to mention a few boards, committees that we're looking for members. If somebody out there feels that they have some time that they'd like to devote to the city, chance to meet new and exciting people, contribute to the welfare of the city, we'd appreciate your volunteering. Let me mention a couple of the committees that are looking for members. One such committee would be the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. The purpose of this committee is it advises the city commission in its effort to support, facilitate, and grow and empower in vital arts, culture, and creative community. This is a committee that meets on the first Wednesday of each month at 5:30 in the Arts and Culture Center, which is in the Peter White Public Library. Second committee that could use some members is called, is the Harbor Advisory Committee. This committee meets on the third Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM, for the most part. Typically, they meet downstairs in room 103 here at City Hall. Harbor Advisory Committee advises the city commission on shoreline, waterfront development, and offshore waters near Marquette with an emphasis on harbor development for both pleasure craft and commercial vessels, and the operations of the marinas, the marine fields, and launch facilities. So if you have the urge to volunteer and would like to join one of these committees, and there are plenty of other committees, we'd like you to step forward. At this time, well, at this time, I'd like to mention that this past weekend was the 4th of July, which was a tremendous weekend for Marquette. We had good weather, good crowds, good times, and a good display of fireworks. I'd like Commissioner Baldini to tell us a little bit about the fireworks that occurred on last Monday night.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, and the Marquette area 4th of July weekend was, as you indicated, a big success, once again, because really of the commitment of the time and the effort and talent of many folks in the Marquette area. This is not necessarily Market City, this is Market Area Chocley and Market Township. And if you notice, the committees, they're made up of all those volunteers from, from the area. The Exchange Club began setting up on Wednesday, and they kicked off their celebration on Saturday, and the Quanis Club organized the parade, and it drew a huge crowd once again. And the 60, the 652nd U.S. Army helped with the pontoons and networks in the park, and the Rotary Club did its 50-50, and somebody won over $5,000. And the Fourth was concluded with a 29-minute firework display that was quite spectacular put on by the Great Lakes Fireworks Organization. As we said, this is not a city function, but because it takes place in the city, I think it's only appropriate to mention that the city staff does an unbelievable job, the police, the fire department, and when you work with them and you say, gee, what about this, they're, they're very pleasant, and I mean, usually when there's all these people, you expect that. And the, the fire department was called on twice in the evening because of some medical emergency, and they responded, and they took care of it, they did a fabulous job. And I want to thank everyone who contributed their time and, and donations and general support, and these things happen only because the folks of this area really commit themselves to so many activities, and tonight I noticed we're doing Art on the Rocks, which is another great volunteer organization and opportunity. We had an interest on, an incident on the fire barge, and the fireworks people tell me that they weren't, they say this happens all the time, but they were professionals, and the professionals took care of it in a very professional manner. Our chief of the fire department is here, and we've asked, I've asked Chief Davis to give us the report that he also put on file, if that's all right with you. Okay?
Yeah. Okay. Good evening. On the night of the 4th of July, obviously, our, two of our trucks responded down to the fireworks, so we had one on standby for that fire. At that time, we stood by as the Coast Guard put it out on the barges. Our fire inspector, Tom Dunleavy, concluded a report on it afterwards, and I'll give you a couple of the highlights on it. Bruce Tyree from Great Lakes Fireworks was interviewed, he stated that embers from fireworks launched off the barge, fell between the wooden mortar racks, and started a small fire. Estimated damage was about $300, and that was some of the fireworks themselves and the wooden racks that were holding them. Mr. Tyree contacted Sergeant Travis Bradbury of the 652nd Army Reserve Unit, who had loaned the two barges for the fireworks display. Sergeant Bradbury reported minimal damage to the barges and was not concerned with that damage. An attempt was made to contact the reserve unit to confirm the information, but no one was available at that time. Sergeant, or I'm sorry, Inspector Tom Dunleavy inspected the fireworks setup at about 7:45 PM on the Fourth, and everything was found to be to NFPA code. The Great Lakes Fireworks crew had all, all fireworks shells up through six inches in wooden mortar racks. Anything beyond six inches and up to 10 inches were put in sand-filled drums, and those were fired exclusively from the barges. Again, to NFPA code. After discussing ways to eliminate future fires on unmanned barges, Mr. Tyree informed us that his company's been in the process of designing metal racks for display use as they're not available on the market right now. They are not currently required by NFPA. However, Mr. Tyree assured us that Great Lakes would be using the new metal racks next year and for subsequent shows in Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking with Mr. Tyree and people like that, they, they tell me there's fires all the time, and it doesn't sound like it's the safest occupation in the world, but they, and they also like this venue because we are out in the middle of water on the pontoons, and it, it really lends for greater protection. So I, I just think we have to thank the community once again for their great support. It's a great activity in the city. I will share with the commission at a future date, this year we hired a drone, maybe some of you saw it, we thought we would try it and see what sort of photos we had of the parade, the park, and sort of just prior to the fireworks, and that we're getting that probably the end of this week, and we'll share it with you, and we may use it for promotional purposes next year or something. So, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Where will we be able to watch it?
Pardon me?
Where will we be able to watch it? Like, will it be on the website?
That's a pretty technical question.
Yeah, I mean...
I, I don't know, I'm gonna see, he's, he's, I spoke today, he's gonna get it to us, and I'll let you know, maybe we can just put it on our computers and...
Okay.
...see it, okay? Yeah.
Okay, next we're gonna move to boards and committees. We have two appointments and one reappointment. Two appointments, we have Natasha Koss to the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee for a term ending 4/119, and Luke Ogle to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/118. We have one reappointment, that's William Toomey to the Police Fire Pension Board for a term ending 7/119. We have motion to appoint and reappoint. Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move we appoint Natasha Koss to the Presque Isle Advisory Committee for a term ending April 1st, 2019, and Luke Ogle to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2018, and reappoint William Toomey Jr. to the Police and Fire Pension Board for a term ending July 1st, 2019.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion? See none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, that passes 7-0. Now we move to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing is to consider a recommended zoning ordinance amendment. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Planning Commission undertook updates to the zoning ordinance, including the South Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code and the Downtown Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code. After staff realized that a resident who wanted to apply for a home-based business would not be able to have his clients visit the home business due to perceived errors, errors written into the South Marquette Waterform-Based Code, the errors in the South Marquette Water, Waterfront Form-Based Code were confirmed, and research led to discoveries of related areas and other parts of the zoning ordinance. Draft amendments that will correct the errors were prepared as three separate amendment cases and presented to the Planning Commission on June 7th, 2016, in a public hearing. The Planning Commission made the following motions. Ordinance 640, it was moved by S. Laurie, seconded by A. Andrews, and carried 8 to 0 that after review of the draft amendment for case 04ZOA0616, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Commission to approve amendments with the addition of a new condition, 80.65.4A1E, that states commercial vehicles used for home occupation cannot be used primarily for commercial advertising. Ordinance 641, it was moved by S. Laurie, seconded by J. Carlson, and carried 8 to 0 that after review of the draft amendment for case 05ZOA0616, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Commission to approve the amendments with the following changes. In section 3.2.2.1(c)(2), replace the term "board" with "Planning Commission," and in section 3.2.3.83, change the term "and" to "or." Six, Ordinance 642, it was moved by J. Carlson, seconded by B. Chapman, and carried 8 to 0 that after review of the draft amendment for case 05ZOA0616, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Commission to approve the amendments with the following changes. In section 1e, under "use as subject to appeal," replace the term "or" with "and," and in section 3b, replace the term "board" with "Planning Commission." Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve adoption of ordinances 640, 641, and 642. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Okay, we are gonna open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to address the commission on this item, now would be your time. Okay? We would need your name, home address, city and or, city or township. Would you like to address us now?
Yeah.
Would you please take the podium up front?
Hi, my name is Paul Carstens. I live at 1714 Fitch Avenue in Marquette. The reason I want to come and make a public comment is in regards to the ordinance or lack of ordinance in the city of Marquette in relation to fireworks. As you all know, the state of Michigan has changed the...
Paul?
Yes.
It has to be in regards to this item that we're talking about.
Oh.
Why don't you save it for, save it for public comment?
Okay.
Okay? Come back to public comment, which is coming up. Thank you. Anybody else wish, wish to comment on this item, the public hearing for the zoning ordinance changes? Anybody? See none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We need a motion? Would there be a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission approve the adoption of ordinances 640, 641, and 642.
Is there a second? Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Any, any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
It's just that we're clearing up language between the different codes here, so it's really nothing too earth-shaking. Okay, we're gonna vote, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Mayor, roll call, please.
It's a roll call vote, thank you. City Clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plurid?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Next, we go to our second public hearing, which is consideration, consideration of a new Class C liquor license for Marquette Zephyr, Inc. City Clerk, could you please give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at the April 11th, 2016, regular meeting, the City Commission adopted a resolution approving an application above all others to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission by Marquette Zephyr, Inc. The city has received a notification that the application has been received by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission from Marquette Zephyr, Inc., down your Route 721, West College Avenue, Marquette, Michigan, for a new on-premise Class C liquor license. This application has been, has received approval from relevant city departments. The City Commission scheduled this public hearing at the June 27th meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the new on-premise Class C liquor license for Marquette Zephyr, Inc. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're gonna open public comment or public hearing on this. Anybody wishing to address the commission, now would be your time to address this item. Does anybody wish to address the commission? Three minutes, name, address, city, or township.
Frank Chep, Eardle 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. June 27th, I told you, June 13th, you wondered if liquor control laws might require the Rosewood patio to be cordoned off. If so, you in effect gave a chunk of our public space to a private entity. The solution is to remove the gate. Who cares who sits there? Post a sign reading that wine must stay on site, out of minor's reach, and enforce the law if necessary. Even after hearing this concern, none of you bothered to mention that cordoning off the area would deny us access, except through their building only during their business hours. You didn't care, end quote, and you still don't care. In fact, you're not even looking at me. So I called the State Liquor Control Board and found out for you that the law doesn't dictate that patios be cordoned off. According to Tina, there's no requirement to have a gate so long as alcohol doesn't leave the deck. Your granting of this license ought to boil down to whether we'll be afforded access to our own property. If you keep the closed gate, then we'll know that you gave public space to a private entity on top of the fact that the appearance of that fencing is too cheesy for such a prime location. Evidently, this patio deal is intertwined with the ability to serve wine out there. This ties in with the unaddressed suspicions about why Dennis, when asked, had no answer for the patio going in ahead of time, and Ms. Reynolds' vote not to suspend the rules for discussion, and Mr. Plurid's blame of the architect and contractor, and Mr. Conley noting that work continued the week before our June 13th hearing. All the above boils down to being able to serve alcohol, meaning tonight's hearing is another done deal. Even the supplement is worded that way. Isn't that so? The business that depends on the license is already invested, this being the cart before the horse that Mr. Plurid said wouldn't happen again. Why are you bothering with a public hearing, then? The answer is to fulfill a formality, as we've learned at so many prior hearings. What is the limit on liquor licenses in Marquette with another one imminent for the Delph Theater? You seem to issue them faster than our population is growing. Please discuss what limits ought to be set on your rampant issuance of liquor licenses. Surely, a liquor license is justified for a wine and coffee shop if a proprietor recognizes that the patio is on public property and gives us access without having to walk through their building. Chances are, they'll keep hours during which customers aren't likely to get out of hand, and if they do, will handle them accordingly. Finally, may the proprietor, who apparently isn't here tonight but needed to be, will offer some bold coffees at an affordable price. And while you weren't looking, Dave, I did tell you that I called the State Liquor Control Board for you and found out that the law doesn't dictate that the patios be cordoned off. According to Tina, there's no requirement to have a gate so long as alcohol doesn't leave the deck.
Anyone else wish to address the commission?
My name is Daniel Rutz. I live at 721 West College Avenue in the city of Marquette. I own Marquette Zephyr Incorporated, and I'm very excited and looking forward to offer wine bar and taproom downtown. It's very different than what we have already downtown, I think very complimentary, and we'll continue to make downtown Marquette a very appealing place to all sorts of folks looking to enjoy our city. Primarily, I'm here on hand for any questions that may come up, and just wanted to make myself known. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? See none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Do we have a motion here? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the new on-premise Class C liquor license for Marquette Zephyr, Incorporated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plurid?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Plurid?
I do have a question for Mr. Rutz. You are the provider of the wine bar in that ground?
I don't know if that's the...
Could you please take the podium?
I'm the only shareholder.
Okay.
Okay.[1296.58][1296.58](Laughter).
Any other discussion? Okay, see none, this is a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plurid?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes.
This passes 7-0. Tonight, we have one presentation. It's a Superior Alliance for Independent Living, which is sale, an update by Colin Jenkins. Is Colin here tonight? Is anybody here for this? We don't have anybody to present, so he just passed by. Can't, unless somebody wants to get up and speak, but nobody's gonna present, okay, we're gonna move on. We're gonna move to public comment. Public comment's the time when you can reserve time to speak on a future item, or you may address the commission with any comments. You are limited to three minutes. We need name, address, city, or township, and we're gonna open public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission? Now's your time.
Thank you for taking the time. Again, my name is Paul Carstens. I live at 1714 Fitch Avenue in Marquette. The reason I came here tonight is to talk about the fireworks ordinance or the lack of one in the city of Marquette, addressing the new type of firework that is allowed by the state of Michigan. My concern is for the safety of myself, the people in Marquette, both their structures and physical. I live by the dome, and the helicopter for Marquette General flies right over my house every day, or a couple times a day, which is great, it's doing its job. I also am a commercial pilot, and I know there's rules for when an aircraft flies, it's, has to fly a certain flight path for safety. However, with no ordinance for fireworks, those, the mortars which shoot out of a tube and go up very high in the air and go like this, there is nothing set. And I observed during the 4th of July time period, the mortars going off, luckily, they didn't happen to go off when the helicopter went over, some were pretty close, time-wise. There's nothing saying the people on the ground were at fault, they have no direction, there's nothing to say, hey, there's something flying overhead. The helicopter pilot probably can see ahead of him, hopefully, that, gee, I guess I got fireworks, maybe I'll fly a little bit higher tonight. So that's a big concern of mine. The other concern is the mortars themselves, which are in a tube and go up in the air, and if you read on the package, I'm sorry, the package says, don't fire around people, around buildings, but they're going off right in the city. Again, where do most people shoot them that I observed was, they're shooting them in the road, okay, which is city property. Okay, as soon as you go, you guys know, as soon as you go to the sidewalk and in to the road, that's all city property. So my question is, is if they shot a mortar off and it landed on somebody's roof, didn't go off right, started a fire, whatever, is the city liable? Again, that's a question, I know I used to chop wood years ago, I used to feed my furnace, I used to have loads, tin cords dumped on the front. Many of you, maybe you remember one of those days. I know a child got hurt in Marquette. They tried to sue the owner because they were playing on their pile. The pile was in the right-of-way of Marquette, and so the city got sued. I'm questioning, again, and the fireworks for safety, both for us and for the liability of the city, we need to look at an ordinance. I think my time is probably up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
I'm Darrell Nedu. I live at 1701 Fitch Avenue, city of Marquette. I'm also here to complain about the ordinance regarding the fireworks. Now, I'm not opposed to the ordinance, I'm just opposed to having fireworks shot at my house. And when I have to clean them off on my roof or clean them out of my yard, it doesn't make me real thrilled. I have filed complaints, police department's been very generous in complying to the complaints that I filed. I would just feel it's probably would behoove for the safety of the city and the residents and the facilities that these fireworks be shot off either on the beach, out in an open field, but certainly not in a residential area where there's hundreds of homes sitting waiting to explode. I spoke with another neighbor here that, yesterday, prior to my coming here, his concern was that they were standing out in the middle of the street, not shooting them in the air, shooting them down the street at cars. That becomes a real concern. I worry about gas tanks exploding, so. I'm also very concerned about this problem right now, and I, I would hope that the city would address it as soon as possible, and I certainly would appreciate some type of follow-up, either from the commission or someone regarding this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
I'm Mary Beth Carstens, and I live at 1714 Fitch Avenue, Marquette, and I also would like to address the shooting off of the very loud, forestful mortar fireworks that are going off in city neighborhoods. We experienced it in our neighborhood over Memorial Day weekend, and also from June 28th through July 6th. What I observed is fireworks being shot off by a rental neighbor, and they were exploding over my neighbor's rooftop with embers falling onto the rooftop, and waste landing on his rooftop and on the tree leaves. And the irony of this was, also noted that the DNR had posted a severe fire danger on their outdoor sign for over the 4th of July. The other concern I have about these new fireworks that have been accepted by the state is the excessive loud noises that they cause. They're very frightening to young children, animals, people who have health issues since, like post-traumatic stress disorders. I'm very aware, I'm very well aware of the state's mandate on fireworks, but I also know that cities can develop ordinances to keep their citizens safe and protected. In the situation of these large new fireworks, I feel that there's a fire danger. I also feel that the folks that are shutting, shooting them off are not doing them necessarily correctly, and many times, there's an alcohol component involved in it, which also causes people maybe not to make the best choices and using the best procedural... and using the best procedural codes of releasing such things. And it's also a huge noise disruption in a small residential area. And as far as resolve goes, I guess I would like the city to look at the fireworks or lack of fireworks code. And I would like to see some designated, designated safe areas within the city. Example, maybe some soccer fields, baseball fields, where folks who want to shoot off these large fireworks could go ahead and do that. I think the intensity and the force of these new state-approved fireworks is much greater than our previous fireworks. And I'm asking you as representatives to take this matter seriously and act proactively instead of reactively in case there would be a matter of a citizen becoming harmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Tim Hepner from three thirteen County Road five-ten in Nagone Township. The reason I've come here today is to bring a situation up that I hope you're aware of. Right now, I am a boater at Prescott Marina and obviously I've been involved with the Prescott Marina since the last five years, since the discussions on rebuilding have gone on. But the situation that's happening right now is very concerning to me. Both of the marinas have no fuel available right now. Press or Cinder Pond, their diesel and their gasoline pumps are down. They're not functioning. And also Prescott is currently out of fuel. They ran out of gasoline on Saturday and they ran out of diesel fuel today. The marina attendant informed me that he had made a call to the city to make sure that they got fuel. But right now, that's a tremendous hazard to boaters that are out in the water. Transients that are coming in from out of town, people who depend on us having fuel available for their boats. There's no fuel. Not only can it delay their trips, but the safety hazard is tremendous. Right now, if the Coast Guard has to make a run and then make a back-to-back run, they're not going to be able to refill with fuel if they have to come into our marinas for fuel. So that's a tremendous, tremendous problem that we have right now. Another issue, the pump-out has been down at Prescott Marina since July twenty-sixth last year. It's still currently down and the pump-out has suffered multiple failures this year at Cinder Pond Marina. So we're getting into a situation where we have sewage that can't be removed from boats. There's not many other options. And facing the fact that these boats have a limited holding capacity, they have to be able to pump out somewhere. So there's very few options. So what we're looking at is sewage possibility of getting into Lake Superior. If these tanks overflow, where do you think it goes? It goes into the bilge of a boat and then the bilge pump pumps it out. So not having these functional pump-outs is a very, very bad deal. And the fuel is just terrible. I can't understand how a city our size with the amenities that we have can run out of fuel at both of our marinas. So I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that this happened and that it could be very detrimental to us. One quick thing I wanted to read to you, the power of social media right now. This is a review that is currently online. And I thought it was something that the city commissioners should see. This is written on Facebook to the Marquette. Let's see, Cinder Pond Prescott Marina Facebook page. Worst city and marina for boating on Lake Superior. Avoid at all costs. Enjoy munising or Big Bay instead. They want your business. Marquette doesn't. So that's written on the Prescott Cinder Pond Facebook page. Not a great thing to have out there publicly, so thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verdo, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Saturday, two boys washed their shoe soles in our new McCarty's Cove drinking fountains. Not only is this grotesquely unsanitary, but will incur higher maintenance costs as the sinks become clogged. This occurred because you included no tap or feet washing station or fulfilling jugs in the new design. Great as the facility is, you left us without a needed service that we once enjoyed. Please reinstall a foot washing station. As each year passes, our lake shore becomes more finite. You reminded again that there isn't enough shore to dedicate a segment to each group. This is never more apparent than during the boathouse ordeal and Fourth of July weekend at McCarty's Cove, where there's no longer adequate space on busy days to throw a flying disc. As erosion attacks our beach from the north, the increase in popularity jams almost the entire stretch on busy days. Areas where sandpipers once scurried in unison, long gone. You care no more about them than the hundreds of frogs and the duck habitat that you needlessly slaughtered barely south of our east-west trail. Are you aware of the fire near Picnic Rocks that consumed roughly fifteen square feet of woodland just inland from the dune grass? We almost lost the entire woods. Then there's the Clark Park Parking and Beach House and five hundred feet of private beach that you finagled behind the scenes to a preferred family? To date, you refuse to divulge the requested details. Our shoreline is getting more finite by the sentence. With the narrower McCarty's Beach, more people set their day spots on the dunes. One party thoroughly trampled one hundred square feet of the main dune near the South Flagpole. For their single outing, that portion of dune will need at least the summer to recover. People tend to walk on bare spots, denuding wider areas as is seen on beaches across the country, if you'd only notice. Chief Davis insists that he's told the guards not to allow glass on our beaches, yet they continue to ignore bottles within sight of their stands and beach patrols. Beaches, drunks, and glass aren't compatible. Someone will imminently require twenty stitches because you're unable to administer a simple rule that applies on most every municipal beach except for ours. No smoking rules also aren't enforced. There are multiple reports that guards aren't keeping their eyes on the water. They face each other, talking or look away longer than what seems necessary. If something raises their attention behind them, by all means, they must be aware of their total surroundings, but without looking away from the water for minutes at a time while people are waiting. I'm not trying to trouble our friendly guards. We want to keep them friendly. They just need to be told more firmly to keep glass and butts off the beach and how short a time it takes for a drowning to occur when the beach isn't watched. You'll note this comment deals with being proactive, to save the dune in time, to save the pain of twenty stitches, to keep the whole works from burning down. Time is of the essence.
Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Good evening. You're Malankin eight Marquette Drive. What an incredible place to live. We had a lady that gave birth on Fourth of July at the parking lot and the staff of the fire department went out there and did their duty. Where else can this happen except in Marquette? Weather was fabulous. Everything went really, really well. Few minor mishaps, but we do live in an imperfect world and stuff does happen. So I thank you for doing as fabulous a job as you do and your staff. We, as citizens, could not be more pleasant or pleased with everything that's going on. I also want to remind that the election is coming pretty close here and I am running for the borderline power and I would like to have everybody's vote that are in the city of Marquette. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Bet, ten thirty-eight Aloe Aire Road, Marquette. And wasn't planning on coming here tonight. I have no prepared statement. I wanted to thank all the commissioners and staff for their service to the city. Wonderful place. And I know you guys do a lot of things right and you should be applauded for that. So before I start complaining, I wanted to give you some credit. But however, I'm a boater. I've been a boater for many years. I have a boat here in Marquette at the Prescott Marina and I have another boat that I sailed seven years ago down to Guatemala where it's in a marina down there. And I can tell you which marina is well-managed and which marina is extremely poorly managed. And unfortunately, the one in Marquette is not the one that's well-managed. It's been a disaster. You keep raising the rates and cutting services. You don't maintain the docks. You don't ma... There's no... Tim forgot to mention, there's only water on half of the dock and the main dock in the Prescott Marina. No pump-out for about a year now. I got a, I was on the waiting list for munising because frankly, because for years, you've been telling, the rumors have been going that Prescott may close any time now, so everybody's leaving. I found out that I could be in munising for half the price that I'm at Prescott. And everything works there, by the way. It's just sad. It's a real sad thing. And you know, I've talked to the commission before and the reason I'm coming to you and not the Harbor Committee is one of the things I talked about the commission four years ago was that the Harbor Committee is ineffective because the city, the former city manager was manipulating it. And this was before you were on a mic, but it was. It was true. And I did some research and found that and I talked to John DiPietro and he was concerned, but then he moved on to other things. So it's hard to, you know, get continuity there, but it's just a sad situation and it needs to be fixed. You know, we need to have a way of listening to our, the users, the boaters. You know, you've built this new boating ramp at the marina and the dock's too short for most of the boats that are in that particular marina. It would have been a very small amount of money to make the dock the right length. There's just not, it just seems like there's no connection between the users, between the public that are using these facilities and getting things done. And frankly, you know, I think they neglected that marina, that grants aren't being written even though they're available. And the idea that the marina is losing money, I don't really believe it for one thing. I've looked at the books. And the other thing is if it's not losing money, you should ask why. You can't continually tell people it's going to close any day, cut services, raise the rates and expect to make a profit. I suspect some of you are businessmen. I don't know if that's, I doubt that that's the way you do business. I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Evening. Mike Kellner, one thirty-five McClure Dam Road, Nagone. I want to agree with him totally. I was at a marina store today and I just overheard a conversation from one of the owners of the store mentioned to a fellow that had a huge boat, was from Texas. And he was talking about where to launch and the fellow that owned the business said, you don't want to go out to the marina in Prescott because it's too small for your size boat. His size boat was a twenty-eight-foot scabbard. That's not a small boat. I mean, I mean, it's not a big boat. It should be able to launch at most of, I mean, Big Bay, Munising, everything else. Those boats are pretty standard. We don't spend enough money on the one at the harbor, the Prescott. It's kind of the bastard child, I think, of the two harbors. Pretty common. I also agree that you talk about closing it and that does affect it. I boat, I trailer mine from my house because of the cost and the small, what you get for your money at the Prescott Marina. I also would like to speak on the fireworks. That's why I live out in the country. Mortars are fun. Fireworks are fun. Fourth of July is for celebrating. Hopefully, we don't do a ban on fireworks in the city. It's sad.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move next to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second? Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Next, we have one item on new business. It is the Lake Superior Art Association, the special event permit. City Clerk, you do have information for us? Background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Lake Superior Art Association, Inc. is requesting the city commission enter into a three-year special event permit for city parks, streets, buildings, and grounds to use Mattson Lower Harbor Park for the purpose of Art on the Rocks. This year's event shall be July thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, until July thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. Staff has worked with the city attorney and Lake Superior Art Association to develop the three-year permit. All user fees may be increased annually based upon the city commission's standard increases. Fiscal effect, the Lake Superior Art Association was approved for promotional fund credit totaling one thousand five hundred dollars. Based on the permit, the general fund may receive some reimbursements. Recommendation, approve the three-year special event permit for city parks, streets, buildings, and grounds with the Lake Superior Art Association and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner Conley?
I move that we suspend the rules for the purpose of discussion.
Would there be a second? Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Okay, we're going to suspend the rules. Commissioner Conley?
Let me start out. This is not directed at the Lake Superior Art Association and the upcoming Art on the Rocks in any way. In fact, I support the approval of this permit for, so that it can go on as we're all looking forward to on July thirtieth and thirty-first. My comments and my concerns are about multi-year agreements and this particular agreement, which could be a model for others in the future, does not address some concerns that I have. In the past, we've gone year to year and granted permits and licenses without adopting it or adapting it to the multi-year situation of it. And so I will, I will support going ahead with the permit process for two thousand sixteen on this. This is not about this year. This is more about our template, our model for multi-year permits. In reading this permit, I was struck by the fact that the permittee, in this case, the LSAA, but in any other, has a ten-year, or I'm sorry, a ten-day cancellation clause. And the city really has none unless there is conduct that is unlawful that takes place during the permit. And I was thinking about Mattson Park and sometimes when I think of Mattson Park, I think about the sinkholes that develop there from time to time and particularly along the bulkhead. But since it is all filled in and that's, it's a coldock, it's really built out on the lake, sinkholes could develop anytime and at least that's what I learned on the Harbor Committee. And if, for instance, a month or two ahead of an event that we were committed to by a three-year contract, something happened that would jeopardize the health and safety of the attendees, that's just one instance. We would still be committed and maybe even liable to the organization that we gave the permit to. So and since there is no other way out of this agreement other than unlawful contact, conduct by the permittee, I think we should, after we approve this, look at our template for multi-year permits and allow some, some escape for health and safety and maybe some other reasons that might come to mind. I can't think of others right now. And change the way we do that henceforth.
Anybody else wish to comment? Commissioner Kimbenzie?
If I could, it's my fourth year on here and I know this has been a subject of concern for many people for many different reasons. And I do think the Parks and Rec Committee did a thorough job of kind of getting a grasp on this. And Carl's here. I'm not sure if he'd be willing to speak to us on it. But I think, one, trying to find a way to lessen the number of events. Two, to make it fair. And three, really honor those events that have been going on for many years in our community. And this is one, I think, certainly fits that mold. And with that in mind, I think that's how we became okay with a multi-year contract. So I don't know if Carl has anything to add or if I could ask.
Carl, you wish to comment or not?
I think you're accurate, Commissioner. The commission has a policy that identifies the use of the larger parks with high-impact events like the, or the rocks. You're also accurate in saying that LSAA has a strong relationship with the city with over seventy years of hosting Art on the Rocks in the city of Marquette. So we have a great deal of confidence with this group. It has great history. Also say that... Also say that, from a staff perspective, we are trying to encourage our most trusted events, the events that are most cherished by the R.C. community to enter into long-term contracts. That helps us ensure and schedule them out to make sure we don't have conflicts. Helps from a budgeting perspective for both the R.C. market and the, the event coordinator. Most of them are volunteers, and for us to be able to work with a strong volunteer to establish a multi-year contract is a benefit, benefit, excuse me, to both parties. I understand Commissioner Conley's apprehension, and certainly is something that we can look into to look after the best interest of the R.C. market in the event that the park is some type of natural, I would say disaster, or some form of failure that would prohibit the event from proceeding, allowing us to have some recourse and assure the city attorney can speak to or can work with us to massage in some language that would be acceptable to both the event coordinator as well as the R.C. market.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Do we want to entertain a motion? Commissioner Conley, do you want to take a motion as stated, or do you want to adjust it?
I'd like to move that we approve a one-year special event permit for city parks, streets, buildings, grounds with the Lake Superior Art Association, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, and direct the city manager and city attorney to develop a model, a multi-year event, a special event permit.
Would there be a second for that? Commissioner Baldini? Any more conversation? Any more comments? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Question for attorney. Should we come up with, I guess, an addendum or something that would take care of Commissioner Conley's concerns? Can that be added at any time if we approve a three-year?
If you approve a three-year, certainly the city and the permittee could amend that agreement at any time. For example, the Hiawatha Music Festival permit, which was approved maybe two years ago for, I think, a five-year term, has been amended at least once, where we've then gone back and changed that, and both of the parties have agreed. So, certainly, if you approve the three-year, we could always amend it at any point, as long as both parties are agreeable.
I guess my concern is that we have several multi-year contracts in place, probably at different places right now with different groups. And so, if it's going to be a blanket thing that we add, I'd hate to kind of punish this group and only give them a one-year permit when we've given the others multiple years. I think there's a better way to fix it than, than limiting it to one year. So, I would be against the current motion for that reason.
Comments? Anywhere else? Commissioner Baldini?
I, I appreciate Commissioner Cam Benzi's point of view, but I think also Commissioner Conley has raised the point. And they've always come back one year at a time on this, and for all practical purposes, we're maintaining past practice with them. I do want us to get into multiple years, but I think a legitimate question has been raised about some concern. And, and I don't think this one year is going to abrogate us from doing a multiple-year one. And we got to get this done now because, you know, the horse is just about ready to leave the barn in terms of the calendar here. So, I, I would like to dot the i's and cross the t's and therefore go with the one-year at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
I think we have to start someplace. And, and I'm sure that if, if it's the will of the commission that we go with a multi-year, that a, a group that we've always enjoyed working with, the LSAA, would accept a reasonable amendment. But why don't we just bake it in originally? And then, actually, if we come up with reasonable, a reasonable clause for us to, to leave, and this isn't just going to be at will we're going to leave. It's going to be because there's health and safety concerns of one park or another. Our, our other groups that we work with for these events that we all enjoy, they'll accept the amendment too, but we have to start someplace. And I, I think this is it. It's not fair to, to, to the LSAA to, to make them say, well, no, we aren't going to approve a three-year or anything. We'll come back before the next commission meeting, which is like five days before their event, and, and do it then. We, we can't do that. But we have to, we have to see, we have some concerns here. We think they're legitimate. I think the LSAA would, would agree, and all the other groups would agree, and will accept what, we're, we're not trying to be unreasonable here. These are reasonable things that would leave the city maybe liable if we didn't put it into the contract. Which we haven't had to, year by year. You don't have to worry about, if you approve something like this, you know, two weeks before the event, you don't have to worry about, you know, what's going to happen two years down the road if the park caves in or something.
Mayor Pro Tim Reynolds?
Well, I'm going to vote for the motion. I understand Commissioner Cam Benzi's comments. I have a question for the city attorney, though. Can, based on the motion that was made by Commissioner Conley, can we just change the three to a one and then follow through? Or do we have to create another permit at this point that has to be renegotiated?
We would have to create a new permit. The one that is currently, actually in front of me or has been given to me in the event it was approved tonight and signed by the permittee would not be sufficient. They've signed it with certain terms, which you are not approving. So, we would need to develop a new one on a one-year term, get it signed by them, and then get it signed by the city.
Okay. So, if that was the case, will we have to have it at our next meeting again and vote on it again? Or would this motion take care of that, and this could be taken care of in the next week or so?
Generally speaking, you do like to see the permits, once they're established for approval. However, you've seen the three-year, and the only thing you're directing us to do is to change that to a one-year with the same prices and terms, just taking the other two years out. I don't see any reason why you could not approve or would not, you know, want to approve that modification to the permit that you've seen as part of the packet with authorization for it to be modified for one year and then signed without having to come back to the commission.
Okay. That was my only concern, because I didn't want it to be the five days beforehand, and then where they couldn't do their thing. So, if that's the case, then I'm willing to move with that.
So, the motion we have is for a one-year contract. And that can yet, we can, if we vote positive, yes, on that, it will still go through, and they will not have to wait unnecessarily. Correct?
Correct. I would suggest that your motion approve the permit with the modification to a one-year term and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign it once that change has been made. And then, I think that should be sufficient.
Commissioner Conley?
I think I made the motion so that it said that it would, that we, we direct or authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. So, I think that's standing. And as the one who made the motion, that is my understanding of what the motion is, to allow the, to allow this to go forward for this year without further red tape, other than just taking out the multi-year paragraph.
Is that good with you, city attorney?
Assuming that was the motion, yes. I guess I don't recall if that's what the motion was, but assuming that was your motion, I think that's sufficient.
It was. I read off the, I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn. I read off the recommendation and changed three to one. And then followed the rest of the recommendation as printed in the agenda.
Commissioner Baldini, you had something?
That was my assumption, that we were just modifying the agreement.
Okay. Commissioner Plord?
Can we get a clarification from the city clerk?
My only question to that was, in your original motion, Commissioner Conley, you also said to direct the city manager and city attorney to develop a model for long-term event use.
That's, that's correct, too. That would be the second part of the motion.
Okay. I just want that clarified.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
My question is, instead of waiting for every, you know, agreement to come up, depending on where they are, some have already passed, is there a more efficient way? Can we just change our policy that would then amend those contracts? Or, I mean, I...
For each of the contracts that are currently in place, I mean, those are actual contracts with two parties who've agreed to do certain things. So, we can't unilaterally change those obligations. That would have to be, if they're already in place, that would have to be something that would have to be signed by both the city and that other party. We, we don't have authority to just change it on them.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm hoping that we can keep with multi-year contracts. It's easier for everybody. And I think we can do that. I'm sure it's the stroke of the pen. So, we have a motion on floor in front of us. We can vote on this. We know what the motion is, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carrie, seven zero. Next, we move to our second and last public comment of the evening. Again, it is a time when you can address the city commission. We're going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission? Anybody wish to address the commission?
Thank you, Jeff. Fifty-fifty switch market. These are my opinions. You're not moving items up on the agenda that we reserve time for. Since there's no apparent logic behind your discretion, why aren't you moving items up? Perhaps this is too complex. You are commended, though, for your ability to call up those who have reserved time. During the hospital approval process, I recall no discussion about the garbage handling facility just upwind. The area around that facility reeks and hosts probably every bacterium known to man. When southwest winds prevail, particulates will blow toward patients with open wounds, respiratory issues, and environmental sensitivities. It's not practical to schedule surgeries only on days when winds blow from the north or east. Please assure us that safety measures are in place, or relocate that garbage facility before a hospital sees its first patient. Odd, no one in here, including me, mentioned that, but we're not the ones investing millions into a new hospital. Note that the EPA is looking into this, given that we have no state agency that looks out for our environment. Even so, the rail yard remains the best location despite the pitiful start you're off to with your needless destruction of the wetland. June twenty-seventh, Mr. Plord mentioned that no one from the public attended the strategic planning meeting. No one at all. This is why we need six minutes. Time needed to repeat background for new members. When I began here in late ninety-seven, two dozen of us partook in the Lakeshore site item, hoping to make a difference, hoping to be heard. Planning meetings were also fairly well-attended. After this board ignored us and approved two twelve-story towers based on who's who, patients, participants dropped off until only I remained. Because our members decide based on who's who, Clark Park, for example, and not on the wisest land used, they realize that their time was wasted. So, it's not worth speaking unless the meeting is televised. At least then, the public is informed, and we're on record, meaning the effort isn't a total waste. July twenty-seventh, the man said he works, thus cannot attend three o'clock meetings. My longstanding point is, you have no mechanism to incorporate what he said here into that meeting. You're responsible for disseminating his pertinent points. You work for him, not vice versa. You also keep looking down during public comment for reasons that appear unrelated to the comments. After all, you make no mention of what was said. It's gotten old playing this eye-contact game with you. You also told the man that he needed only to say "Marquette" for his address, which is odd because he hadn't spoken yet that night. You gave him preferential treatment over those whom you're forced to give street addresses each time. Finally, thank you, though, for the awesome fireworks. Boston, Massachusetts sure loves to brag about theirs, not knowing that ours, except for one year, far exceeded those that I saw there back in nineteen eighty-nine. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. Next, we're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Reynolds.
It's always like Commissioner roulette with the comments. Wasn't ready. Okay. One, I just wanted to thank Tom for what he does and all the great time and efforts that he spends doing the fireworks. We all know all the great things he does for our community, and that's one of the best. And my next thing was, I just had a question, and I think it's probably going to be you, Blake. I know most people don't ask you questions throughout the meeting very often. But it's pertaining to the individuals with the fireworks issue, and I'm curious. I, we don't have an ordinance for fireworks, do we, at this point?
No, we do not.
Okay.
The city has not adopted a fireworks ordinance.
And I remember at one time, we had another individual, maybe two years ago, that mentioned this. And I, at the time, didn't see the big deal about it, I guess. But this last set of fireworks, and this last round, my Husky was absolutely terrible for the last two weeks, and they still were going off at one in the morning last night, and waking up my daughter and things like that. So, I understand where these citizens are coming from, and I would support some kind of, I don't know what exactly I would be interested in, but some kind of research put into it, and maybe an ordinance made from that. And that's all I have for the night.
Commissioner Frazier?
Maybe next year, we can give Tom an extra fireworks extinguisher, and he could borrow a kayak or canoe from Mike Conley, and he could row out, help put out the fire in the barges, just in case it lights up fire again. Because he said it was part of the show, but, you know. Just in case it happens again, maybe he could talk to Ian on how to put out fires, and he could borrow a fireworks extinguisher from their, their crew to go out and help put out the fire, you know. I hear about the fireworks problems. I, I think it's something that we could come up with, maybe come up with an ordinance and have a public hearing on it or something like that. Maybe the two chiefs can talk, you know, chief of police and, and chief of fire can talk and figure out something that we can talk about. We can vote on it and maybe work out, like, maybe say, okay, you have the third of July, the fourth of July, and the fifth of July to have fireworks or something like that, and let them figure out the details. And Ian could tell you all about the, the safety part of it, and Blake could tell you about the legal parts of it. So, we got two guys that have great knowledge that could work out some great stuff for us. As far as the boating problems, Presque Isle, it's stuff I've heard about for years. I'm kind of passionate for that stuff. I'm a boater. Got a boat in the marina. Had a boat in the marina for years, and hopefully, we can figure out what to do with that. You know, my dad, my dad was just a munising over the weekend, and great, not a great, not as good a marina as we have, but he got pumped up before he left just because he knew the, the city marina's pumps weren't working that great. So, just something for us to think about, to look into. You know, I look at, I use the example of like, it's like if you own a house, own an apartment, and your bathroom doesn't work, you're going to call your person that owns the apartment and see if you can get it fixed. You think you're paying all this money for it, so you'd be able to get it fixed. Same thing with boaters feel with their, with their, they're paying all this money. They want to have all the facilities ready for them. So, just something for the, the city to look into. And again, Tom, great show, and we look forward to another great show next year.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Well, I'm going to start off. I'd like to thank our, our new, new fire chief, Ian Davis. Thank you for the update. Certainly, a lot of people have been asking what the heck happened. I was in munising for the fourth and just came back to some videos that people kept showing me, so I didn't know how to respond. And I'd like to thank the residents who were here tonight to speak up about the fireworks. Your concerns are valid. In fact, I have a five-year-old golden retriever who is deathly afraid of them and could hear them going off at three, four, or five in the morning. So, it's happening all over, and I, I think that there is probably a way. I think the state actually maybe specifies that you can light them off a day before or a day after. Should we take that a step further? You know, I think you bring up a lot of valid points, certainly, by addressing the commission tonight. And so, I'm confident we can get back to you with, with a response. The last thing I just want to comment on, the Presque Isle marina, that review, it's hard to hear, because all of us value the city we live in. And marinas are expensive, and I think that we were at a point where we could have had a very favorable vote to probably go with option three, which was the, the biggest, I guess, rebuild of that. go with option three, which was the biggest, I guess, rebuild of that marina. We do look at those marinas separately, but we need to remember that when the Cinder Pond was being built, we did borrow money from the Prescott Marina account to make it whole. So I think we do need to look at our marinas more as one in terms of funding them. I spent the fourth immunizing, checked out their marina, very small, but it is very nice. So I'd like to see us get back to that. Lastly, the fenced-in comment with alcohol, I believe that's a local zoning ordinance. So I think if we look there, that's probably where we're going to find why we need a gate. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
So I have a couple of questions about the frogs. First of all, did they die or did they croak? Second, being frogs, did they want to surrender first? Okay, now about fireworks. Thank you, Commissioner Baldini, and your, and your committee. It was a wonderful Fourth of July, and I know it took a team, it took your own personal efforts plus a lot of others. It was a wonderful parade, celebration, and the display of fireworks was unsurpassed. And I had a whole family here, and we all enjoyed them and passing their thanks on, too. Talking about personal fireworks, there are other communities in the state that have a fireworks ordinance. The state law limits how much you can put in that ordinance, but I think we could look at other communities in the state and model our ordinance off of theirs, bring it back for public comment. I think those who want to live out in the country and shoot off all their fireworks, let them. That's personal choice. You can do it off of private property. I think the state law says you can't do it from city property, actually. So shooting off fireworks along the bike path in Matson Park, even on a ball field, is illegal under the state law. And I think we can further amplify that with a, with an ordinance. And I think we should look into that. Some of these ordinances have been written. I think we can do some R and D. That's called rip-off and duplicate, the term I got from the planner in Ironwood, and modify it for our own needs and adopt it. But I think, acting city manager, I think you're getting a consensus with the commission, that that's something that we'd like to proceed with. So anyway, thanks again for a wonderful Fourth. A lot of people enjoyed it.
Commissioner Plord?
I agree. Thanks, Tom. You put a lot of effort into it, and I get a chance to watch the effort that you put into it, and it was a fabulous Fourth, one of the best parades that I've seen for years. And I've been in the parade myself for a couple of years now, so it was, it was spectacular. It was everything we hoped and we expected it to be, and that's, that's huge. I also agree, we need a fire, fireworks ordinance. I'm absolutely for it. For my part, I'm a late-night person, and I sat up the night of Fourth of July, the night before the Fourth of July, and listened to fireworks at one in the morning, three in the morning. There's absolutely no excuse or reason why we should allow fireworks to go off at one in the morning or three in the morning. And we absolutely should be enforcing that fireworks are not, are not fired off on city property. So, yeah, we, I agree, we need an ordinance. And I would like to see the ordinance as soon as possible, because we've got a lot of summer left, and we've got some more, one more holiday, one more major holiday coming up. And I'd like to see something in place, if we could do it, certainly before Labor Day. But I absolutely support a fireworks ordinance in the city of Marquette, and we need, we need to limit that. And I'm willing to work on it as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for the accolades, but it is a committee, folks. I mean, it's amazing how many people, they raise money. The DDA provides tremendous support for all of us to get our paperwork done. And it really is, in many ways, refreshing to see how many people just dive in and get it done. But along that lines of fireworks, you know, it's going to become even a greater problem, because there's a store built in Nagani now that just sells fireworks. And I don't think they're open for just one month. So it's a growing, it's going to be a growing issue and problem in the community. And I think your point that the summer is, we're in the early part of summer, and there are other opportunities to do that, and somehow we have to regulate it. It's tricky, because somebody sets something off, and they call the police, and by the time the police get there, the people are gone or the kids are gone. So I also think we have to, we have to look at the marina. I heard about the marina. I was down in the park for, during the Fourth of July celebration, and boaters did take the opportunity to chat with me, those who knew I was with the city. And I've discussed some of that with the city, and I think we have to look at that. We, why is something not working? Why is it we don't have fuel? I don't have those answers, so, but thank you.
Tom, thank you to you and your committee. You did do a good job. I'll mention the committee. It was a great Fourth of July, good weather, good parade, good fireworks. I do appreciate the Carlson's for coming in, discussing the fireworks problem. This comes up every year at this time. I know last year or two years ago, we looked into it even more. And I do know that the police department is doing all they can. I mean, they can only do so much with this. They can't be everywhere at once. You are allowed to put off fireworks day before, day after. The problem becomes when it goes all week long. Other communities, we've looked at what they've done, and it's, there's no easy answer to this, but yes, we should look into it before somebody gets hurt, if nothing else. But it, yeah, it's, they, the people doing it may like it, but not everybody around them does, and it could be dangerous. The marinas, I'm sorry to hear the comments. We are aware of this. I think that the city is doing as much as they can. It's just we got to do more. We, I don't like to hear the bad comments. It reflects, does not reflect well on the city of Marquette. And, you know, they are our showpiece. You know, we have the marinas, others don't nearby. And it's important that we have good, functioning marinas that are well-liked, well-attended. Okay, our city manager's gone. We have the chief financial officer who is stepping in as the city manager today. Gary?
Hi. Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Just to let you know, and it's a little bit late for this, year's Fourth of July, but staff is already working on a fireworks ordinance, and we will have that to you just as soon as we possibly can. So, and that's my last comment. Well, Mike will be here in two weeks, hopefully. Mike, if you're out there, you are coming back, right? Thank you.
We are adjourned.